Good morning, everyone. The June 1st, 2022 virtual session of the Anorundel County Council is now in session. The main purpose of this meeting to begin our final deliberations on the FY 23 proposed budget for Anorundel County. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, Madam Chair, I will. I do want to point out it appears that maybe there's some internet difficulty on your end of things. You might just if there's anything you can do, I just wanted to let you know that. And on with the with the roll.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll see what I can do.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler. I know Ms. Fiedler is trying to join. Ms. Radbien. I can see Ms. Radbien is here. I understand some internet troubles. There you are. Okay, Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Madam Chair, we do have six council members in attendance and our county auditor. And again, I believe Ms. Fiedler is trying to join the meeting right now.
All right. Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mr. Vol today.
Please join me for a moment of silence before the invocation, where we remember the 21 people who lost their lives in Uvalde, Texas, 19 children and the two teachers. Thank you. And now, if you will pray in a manner consistent with your faith as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen. And now, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have once reviewed and approved, such as having a call and phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, and allowing the public to register using Zoom and watch the meeting in Zoom. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda today? All right, hearing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Hare, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion Madam Secretary, please read the
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe you asked me to read the title of Resolution 1222. Resolution number 1222, Resolution urging the Board of Education of Anorundel County to delay implementation of new school start times for Anorundel County Public Schools.
Madam Chair. Thank. Yeah.
Thank you. I think this may be the moment, but if I could make a motion that we suspend the rules so that we can hear and vote on Resolution 12-22, I would make that motion. So we could do that today.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution number 12-22 first thing this morning.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 1222 this morning has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 12-22.
Resolution number 1222, Resolution urging the Board of Education of Anorundel County to delay implementation of new school start times for Anorundel County Public Schools.
Thank you. This resolution is from Ms. Pickard, Mr. Volkey, Ms. Fiedler, and Mr. Pruski. I will let the four of you decide who will speak first.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to to chime in. It's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. This resolution is brought before the council today after all of us have heard the concerns of both our bus contractors and other community stakeholder groups like our Community Policing Bureau with regard to crossing guards, as well as our wreck and parks in regard to childcare, after school and before care. We've all heard testimony from our bus contractors about their concerns. Each of these concerns stem from the labor shortage currently affecting our transportation services. And the concern is quite serious in regard to how we are currently operating our transportation service for our school system and how it will be. The concerns are exacerbated with the change in start times. It's not meant to be, and it's not stated to be, a debate on the actual decision to move start times. I think that is settled in the county. But the concern, like other jurisdictions around the country, have made this decision, like in the city of Philadelphia. This is not the year to move forward. So that's that's why I wanted to make sure we put this statement on the record. And I'll let my colleagues speak to their concerns.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Yeah, I I join with many of the comments that Councilwoman Pickard noted, and this is actually something that Councilwoman Fiedler and I had sent a letter about a six or seven weeks ago to the Board of Education with many of these same concerns. And I think this is something that all of us have been hearing from constituents, both educators, parents, the bus contractors, bus drivers, childcare providers across the board. This has been consistently something that we're hearing. Not that people are saying the merits of the change. You know, they're not addressing that piece of it, as Councilwoman Pickard said, but rather they're addressing the runway, if you will, and the time to implement these changes for this upcoming school year and how that's going to impact families, students, businesses, et cetera. So with that, I think that it is important that we as a body take a position on this because it is something that our constituents are talking about extensively and that we share that position with the Board of Education, particularly considering we are the funding authority for about half of their budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Just to echo the sentiments of our colleagues, it really boils down to when multiple agencies, groups of individuals within the community, businesses, when they're all waving the red flag, I think we need to pay attention and their serious concern about a successful rollout. And I think the spirit of changing the school start times was for a successful rollout that is easy and smooth. And all indicators are pointing that that's not going to be the case. So I signed on for this, as Mr. Volkey did, after we wrote the letter, and I hope we can pass this today.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Andrew Pruski, I'm not going to repeat what was stated, but I think what's important is normally, many of you know, I don't get involved with school board issues. I think that there's a dividing line, but when I have bus drivers who are constituents in my community who happen to drive the kids, I have parents that are obviously reaching out to me. And I think the biggest concern is to make sure that due to COVID and the labor shortage, that we're prepared for a change. I did share with the school board, just so everybody wearing it's a part of the record. I really did not like the opt option piece where students had to opt out for buses. I think everybody should be opting in or the reverse, excuse me, and with that section, I mean, you know what I'm talking about. It was very confusing for people. I personally, again, I know that we can go to the Constitution. Some of you are traditionalists. The saying that school bus, you know, service is not maybe written in the law, but I believe it's a right. I don't think it's a privilege, and I think we should give every child in our county the ability to ride a bus. So there's a lot of concerns and issues. Again, to be clear, the start time decision was made, and I understand there's a lot of planning. This was going on and on. But if the bus companies and the staffing shortages have an impact upon that, we have to look at that. And I think that's a serious issue. And again, this is a statement. This is not directing the board what to do. This is a statement. To be clear, to share these concerns that that we're hearing. And again, I think it needs to be looked at as far as the discussion. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Oh, yes, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am I can't support this resolution. I think the Board of Education is responsible for its own decisions. And this is one area where we've given them all the tools that they've asked for and that their consultant has said that they need. Other things are totally beyond our control and their control, but it's up to them to be the leaders and set the policy as appropriate. And if they don't figure this out, those consequences are on them. And so even though I am a mom of now three children instead of four who are riding the school bus, and they're going to three different schools next year, and I have no idea how it's going to get done. I just don't think we should weigh in, and we've chosen not to weigh in on these issues before. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. I'm going to just take a moment to express I have multiple reasons that I cannot support this resolution. As all of you know, I teach in the public schools, and I have colleagues that have actually already changed their job assignments, have applied to new positions because they are expecting the start times to change. We are so close in this in the timeframe of scheduling. It's June 1st, and the school buses are going to start rolling again for the new school year in in just a few months. My understanding is that the routing has been done with the start changes in mind and that there is no routing that has been done that will adopt the efficiencies that can be gained from the transportation consultant report based on the existing start and exist. If we were to stay in the existing start times, we would have the same overcrowding issues that we currently experience. Finally, I think, you know, my colleague that, you know, this is really a decision that belongs to the school board. We do not have all of the information that the that they have. We do not have access to the transportation consultant. We do not have access to their routing decisions, all of their hiring decisions. And so I certainly understand that there is concern from various community entities, but they are duly elected officials. Every single one now of members of the school board is duly elected. And, you know, they have the same constituents that we have. I'm sure they have been hearing the same concerns that we have. And we just, as a body, do not have the same breadth of information that the that the school board members have on this topic. And so I feel for us to weigh in would really be just stepping in in an inappropriate way. I feel that real leadership here comes with figuring out how to get it done rather than allowing obstacles to be thrown up in the way. If the school board has said that this is what they plan to do, which I believe the decision to change the start times in fall of this year was made actually during the pandemic, during when a lot of these labor issues started in January of 2021. And I actually believe that the labor issues we are facing are not going to go away when we, you know, are fully clear of the pandemic. I feel like our labor shortages are much more an issue of baby boomer generation retiring. A lot of my colleagues, I can say anecdotally, have retired in the last couple of years, even though they may have intended to work for a few more years, said, you know, I'm going to go ahead and retire now and protect my health and my family and and move on to my retirement. So I'm not sure we're going to be seeing any relief in the labor shortage. So we've got to be thinking things in new terms, not not expecting the labor patterns just to roll back to where they were before the pandemic. We are in a much tighter labor market in terms of, you know, hiring, the competition for employees is much greater than it has been in a very long time. And I don't see that changing. So I worry that if we put this off, we're, you know, we, when, when will we do it? And again, ultimately, that decision should be made by the Board of Education, who has all of the facts and not us. And with that, I will express my opposition. Better, go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly can understand your position and our differences of opinion. I would just like to add that while I know that the school board does review the prismatic study. From my understanding, the prismatic study didn't include a discussion with our police department about the shortage of crossing guards and didn't consult and review staffing at recreation and parks for before and after school care, which are two of the whereas clauses in the resolution. That's all.
I would just argue that our responsibility as a council is to address those problems, not to just say, well, they're problems. We can't help. We can't do anything. We were elected to be leaders and problem solvers. And if we have, you know, if if there are concerns about, you know, we may have a shortage of crossing guards, that is on us to figure out how to bring in those crossing guards and on us to figure out how to bring in the needed, the needed before and after care, not for us to say, this is too big a problem. We can't handle it. We weren't elected to dodge difficult questions. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree. I agree that we were all elected to be leaders and problem solvers. But we also have to, when that time comes, to make a statement such as this, which is, which is only a statement. It we must lead and acknowledge the challenges that this decision at this moment of time in our county brings to our transportation system. We weren't expecting the the chaos of the fall with the shortage of school bus drivers. It hasn't necessarily been alleviated this year. And I'm just really concerned that if we don't make this statement, acknowledge the stakeholder groups and county departments and bus contractors. If we don't acknowledge what they've come brought to us in this statement, I just think we're failing as leaders, to be quite honest. We all have had to pivot. Small businesses have had to pivot. The school system has had to pivot, and I think the school board needs to take a very hard look at how this rollout is going to to happen in the fall and acknowledge the information that's been brought to them. I was part of I led the way on trying to problem solve, and I brought the the police department and the school board president and their leadership together to acknowledge the crossing guard information. I just can't ignore it. I can't ignore the information we have in front of us and not make this statement today. So we agree on some, but not all of the situation at hand. So thank you.
All right, I think I could continue to continue to add more to the conversation here, but I think the the vote here is probably clear, given the sponsorship. So at this time, if there's no further discussion, seeing no additional hands, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 12-22.
Yes, Madam Chair, I will do that. I just wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Barron was here. I wasn't certain if you all wanted to acknowledge that or not, but before I called the roll, the vote, I just wanted to say that. So.
I sorry, Mr. Barron, would you like to weigh in on this resolution before we vote? And thank you very much, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Corby. Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't, Pete Barron, for the record, with the county executive. I won't belabor the points that have been made. Think the county executive, much like every member of this council, is looking at this issue very carefully. We have communicated with the school system with our concerns. I think the term runway is the right word to use this. The county executive believes in the change of school start time, but believes that in order to address some of these labor issues that were mentioned, school crossing guards, after school care, all of that, a longer runway is needed, and therefore we would support this resolution. Thank you.
Are there any additional? Thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 12-22.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
You're muted.
Oh, Ms. Radbien, you're on mute, sorry.
Thank you. Just once again, want to be respectful of our duly elected colleagues who sit on the Board of Education, who have much more information. I will not support this resolution. Nay.
That is five in the affirmative, excuse me, two in the negative. That means that Resolution number 1222 is adopted.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. At this time, I would like to introduce our county auditor, Michelle Bowler. She will be presenting this for, she will be presenting for us this morning, and when she's finished, we can take some time to ask some questions. Ms. Bowler, you have the floor.
Thank you. Floria is going to start a video I pre-recorded to hope hopefully avoid any technical difficulties. Thank you.
Yes, if you're ready for me to start that, I will do that. Just give me one moment, please.
Madam Chair, Council, I'm sorry, the video is, I need to just make one quick correction.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. I am Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. I'm here to provide our comments on the county executives' proposed FY 23 operating budget and capital budget and program. I would first like to thank the team from the Auditor's Office, who is here virtually with me today. Our presentation and recommendations before you would not be possible without their dedication and hard work. Our team includes Terry Gibson, Jennifer Mackey, Sayad Takvi, Karen Howes, Ronette Ackley, and Joshua Naylor. Phyllis Clancy helped with the capital projects review, and this year we also had the help of Amy Wang and Yasharth Vikram. Thank you to the entire team for all of your dedication.
Again, Madam Chair, Council, I apologize. This was working before we began the meeting. Just give me a moment to figure out what's going on here, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. I am Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. I'm here to provide our comments on the county executives' proposed FY 23 operating budget and capital budget and program. I would first like to thank the team from the Auditor's Office, who is here virtually with me today. Our presentation and recommendations before you would not be possible without their dedication and hard work. Our team includes Terry Gibson, Jennifer Mackey, Sayad Takvi, Karen Howes, Ronette Ackley, and Joshua Naylor. Phyllis Clancy helped with the capital projects review, and this year we also had the help of Amy Wang and Yasharth Vikram. Thank you to the entire team for all of your dedication and perseverance. It is no small feat to get through this entire budget in such a short period of time, and it takes both individual effort and team collaboration to provide the best review possible. I think that the Office of the Budget and my office agree that the summer officially starts on June 15th, and we are excited to get to that finish line. I would also like to thank Department Management and Staff and the Office of the Budget, who have been answering our many questions over the past few weeks. Specifically, I would like to thank Mr. Trombauer. As he and I have discussed, this is a difficult timeline that takes time to get right, and we appreciate the shared goals of getting the best budget possible for our county. The first part of my presentation includes my general comments on the budget and its contents. After that, I will move on to our recommendations for reductions to the budget. On April 29th, the Spending Affordability Committee delivered its report to council, which provided its recommendations for FY 23 spending and general fund debt limit. I have provided calculations in my presentation showing that the proposed budgets exceed the recommended spending limit by $62.5 million. However, the county is within the recommended general fund debt limit. The $62.5 million is 3.5% of adjusted recommended spending. I also provided the past four years of SAC recommendations as compared to the general fund spending in the proposed operating budget. For FY 23, the general fund appropriation limit is calculated as follows. The recommended FY 23 general fund spending of $1.8 billion is added to the available general fund balance of $262 million and the contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund of $23.5 million. This totals to the adjusted recommended FY 23 spending of $2.1 billion. The general fund spending per proposed FY 23 operating budget is $2.157 billion. The general fund spending per proposed FY twenty-three operating budget is two point one five seven billion dollars. The proposed FY twenty-three spending in excess of the SAC recommendation is sixty-two point five million dollars. This SAC recommended FY twenty-three general fund debt limit is one point eight billion dollars. The estimated outstanding general fund debt at the end of FY twenty-three is one point six billion dollars. Therefore, the proposed FY twenty-three debt less the SAC recommended limit is one hundred and seventy-six million dollars. I first want to acknowledge the work with the Office of the Budget, particularly Mr. Haseem, that is involved in bringing you my analysis of debt affordability. There are many factors and assumptions used in this calculation that affect projections. Most of the assumptions used this year in our review are consistent with last year, unless otherwise specified. In the proposed capital budget overview on pages one and three, the administration presented its debt affordability analyses showing that the proposed capital budget and program is within the county's established guidelines. On page one of their, of the capital budget overview, the administration analyzes the CIP as an average of a hundred and sixty million dollars per year and calculates the debt ratios using the one hundred, one hundred and sixty million dollars. On page three, the administration calculates the debt ratios using the actual bonds in the program. The average capital program for the next six years is one hundred and sixty-two point three million dollars, which is just below the average capital program cost over the prior six years, which was a hundred and sixty-three million dollars. This shows that the county is still within its debt guidelines using the capital, this capital program and out-year revenue and capital increases that are both three point five percent. This slide shows a table with the debt statistics projected out past the first six years. In scenario one, I use the CIP as proposed and project the far-out years, assuming that growth in the capital expenses keep pace with revenue growth at three point five percent. I have shown the statistics in five-year increments. The county would stay within all of its guidelines through FY forty-five, except for the debt per capita. However, it is important to note, as mentioned in the budget presentation, this needs to be changed periodically because it is inflationary. I want to note a couple of things about the proposed capital budget and program. This capital program is relatively front-loaded and has lower estimated capital programs than average in FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-eight. I have also prepared long-range projections using a second scenario to show an alternate projection. In scenario two, I use all of the same assumptions, except I assume a five percent growth in capital expenses, which reflects the average growth in the CIP over the last twenty years. I also included spending for FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-eight that reflect the average of the program size from FY twenty-three through FY twenty-six, less than nineteen million dollars in authority carried forward from underutilizing bonds last year. As you see, the debt as a percentage of full value guidelines are reached by twenty forty. The main point of this scenario is to show that growing the capital program at pace with revenue growth long-term and being sure to keep the average six-year program within the limit is better to stay within the guidelines than a capital program going, growing faster than revenue. There are other factors that have provided such high amounts of PGO funding to pay cash rather than use debt to fund a very large program. This is great news for the county, but I caution that many of the factors that have led to this are unlikely to continue, at least to such a degree, in the future. Revenues have exceeded estimates in unprecedented levels. It was excellent that the county was conservative in estimates that led to this surplus, but we are already seeing revenues settle into more expected patterns. There has also been a significant influx in grant funding that has also helped alleviate pressure for both capital and operating expenditures. While not directly related to debt affordability, I point this out as a reminder that many of the tools the county has had at its disposal recently are unlikely to be available in FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-eight, and the spending level from FY twenty-four through FY twenty-six could make those years more challenging to stay within affordability guidelines. Later in our presentation, we will provide recommendations that will help reduce spending that could provide opportunities for current savings that can fall to fund balance and potentially provide additional PGO opportunities for FY twenty-four, though everyone I have talked to agrees that it would be unlikely to ever reach the level seen this year. Of course, we cannot accurately predict that far into the future because there are numerous factors that could change these projections. However, I continue to urge the administration and the council to limit the debt load at a level that keeps the debt statistics flat. This next slide shows the proposed changes to the Revenue Reserve Fund. The FY twenty-three operating budget requests a transfer of twenty-three point five million dollars. The current balance limit of this fund is six percent of general fund revenues. However, Bill fifty twenty-two has been introduced and, if passed, will increase the balance limit of this fund to seven percent of general fund revenues. FY twenty-three estimated revenues are one point nine billion dollars. Therefore, the reserve maximum is one hundred and thirteen point seven million dollars at the six percent limit and one hundred and thirty-two point seven million dollars at the proposed seven percent limit. Our FY twenty-two estimates show an ending balance of approximately one hundred and five point seven million dollars with the FY twenty-three contribution of twenty-three point five million dollars and projected interest of one point five million dollars. We estimate an ending balance of one hundred and thirty point seven million dollars, which is seventeen million over the current six percent cap and two percent, two million dollars short of the proposed seven percent cap. We have reviewed the administration's estimates for revenue in all operating funds and concur with the estimates within a reasonable margin. I will give, I will give my annual reminder that I am not an economist, but based on our reviews performed, the assumptions used by the administration seem reasonable. As you know, the administration has set the property tax rate at point nine three three dollars per one hundred dollars of assessed value and point five five nine dollars for the city of Annapolis. This year, the county did not maximize its rate under the tax cap. The administration has projected an overall increase in income taxes of sixty-seven point three million dollars over last year's original budget. However, this is only eighteen point two million dollars over the revised budget of six hundred and ninety-six point five million dollars. The most recent income tax distributions indicate that the county will likely exceed this revised budgeted amount. At this stage, while there are still so many unknowns, we agree with the administration's conservative approach. We believe that the administration's estimate for FY twenty-two accreditation and transfer taxes is low. This is because we have the advantage of including another two or three months of actual activity to estimate the FY twenty-two amounts and can see that we have already exceeded the administration's FY twenty-two estimate. We project a hundred and eighty-six million dollars in FY twenty-two compared to the estimate of a hundred and seventy million dollars. However, we believe that their FY twenty-three projection of a hundred and thirty-one million dollars is reasonable because we do not believe the current level of accreditation and transfer taxes is sustainable over time, and we have no way of knowing when that might suddenly change. Therefore, we would not recommend any higher level of revenue to be projected as a recurring revenue. Along with the submitted annual budget and appropriation ordinance, the administration introduced several bills to establish tax rates that will provide the revenue to fund the proposed FY twenty-three budget appropriations. Bills thirty-eight twenty-two through forty-nine twenty-two established tax rates for the special taxing districts, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, waterway improvement districts, the county property and income taxpayers, the city of Annapolis, and the city of Highland Beach. We have reviewed the calculation of the rates and agreed the rates will generate revenue to support the FY twenty-three appropriation request in the ABAO. Now I will discuss the operating budget. The FY twenty-three budget proposes to appropriate twelve million dollars for contingencies. This slide shows the amounts appropriated in the contingency account for the last five years. This fund is used for additional appropriation requests. Historically, this account included the cost of snow removal and storm damage, but was also the funding source of many unanticipated needs during FY twenty and FY twenty-one due to the COVID-nineteenth pandemic. The pay increases for county groups vary, and for your reference, this slide summarizes the pay increases provided to county employee groups, the library, the community college, and the teachers. The FY twenty-three budget includes fifty-eight new general fund positions, one of which is partially grant-funded and one new grant fund position. Appendix A provides a summary of the new positions and the estimated impact of these positions, including recurring costs such as salary and benefits and one-time costs such as computers and desks. American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, ARPA, funds are programmed in the FY twenty-three budget, similar to how this occurred in the FY twenty-two budget. These are the following departments with programs over five hundred thousand dollars. These projects would have otherwise come to the council for review per Bill one eleven dash twenty-one, but will not because they are included in the FY twenty-three proposed budget for approval. This slide shows the departments in the FY twenty-three budget that have placeholders for potential future ARPA funding. As discussed in the last slide, any projects over five hundred thousand dollars will be required to come to the council for review. There are a total of nine point four million dollars in community grants funded by the general fund and two point five million dollars in community grants funded by other funds included in the FY twenty-three proposed budget. The FY twenty-three proposed budget follows the county's reevaluated other post-employment benefits, OPEB, policy. The same methods and assumptions were used as last year to determine the actuarial determined contribution, EDC. Based on the OPEB annual report as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the county's total OPEB liability is nine hundred and twenty-three million dollars, and the asset was three hundred and seventy-one million dollars. This leaves a net OPEB liability of five hundred and fifty-two million dollars. The one billion dollar liability estimate for FY twenty-two is based on historical average and the five hundred and one thousand dollar portion, funded portion, oh, five hundred and one million as funded portion estimate is based on historic average with consideration of the estimated improvement of fifty million dollars, which would bring the estimated funding to fifty percent. We wanted to show this graph to show the remaining liability and how important it is to continue to fund this liability. I want to take a minute to discuss the school component units that have Maintenance of Effort Agreements, MOE, related to their funding. We have reviewed the Board of Education's budget and have reconciled the county executive's request to the schedules provided by the board that present the superintendent's and board's request. This slide shows the FY twenty-three requested appropriation as compared to the MOE and the prior four years of MOE required as compared to the budgeted appropriation. The FY twenty-three proposed budget includes fifty million dollars in funding above the MOE. We have also reviewed AACC's budget and have reconciled the county executive's request to the schedules provided by AACC. This slide shows the FY twenty-three requested appropriation as compared to the maintenance, the MOE and the prior four years of MOE required as compared to the budgeted appropriation. The FY twenty-three proposed budget includes one million dollars in funding above the MOE. I wanted to take an opportunity to discuss some of the placeholders and estimates that are included in the budget. The following are generally related to new program startup funding and are high-level estimates that were not able to be supported. The Crownsville Hospital complex includes seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in operating funds and one million dollars in capital funding, which includes five hundred thousand dollars for planning the property and five hundred thousand dollars for planning the park in capital funds. The fire department has included three million dollars in county general funds in the operating budget and one point five million dollars in state grants to replace two fire boats. Other items included are ten million dollars added to start the Housing Trust Fund, seven hundred and thirteen million, uh, seven hundred thirteen thousand dollars for the Police Accountability Board, five hundred thousand dollars in recreation and parks for a green infrastructure management consultant, one point five million dollars for the Resilience Authority, and a one million dollar community grant in the capital program for the Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Station. There are also the following additions included as placeholders in the following funds. Three million dollars in the Garage Vehicle Operating Fund due to rising gas prices, a five point five percent placeholder for an estimated five point five percent rate increase for health insurance rates on January first, twenty twenty-three, and a sixteen point five million dollar additional contribution to the Pension Fund. In the proposed operating budget, the water and sewer usage rates increased by four point nine five percent and four point eight three percent, respectively, in FY twenty-three, with additional increases anticipated in the following three years, eight point five percent in FY twenty-four, seven percent in FY twenty-five, and two percent in FY twenty-six. The environmental protection fee and water and sewer capital facility connection charges will increase in accordance with the rates established in the code. Last year, it was planned to delay the increase until FY twenty-four due to the addition of ARPA funds as PGO to the capital projects. However, due to the fund balance, the rate increases are now proposed to start in FY twenty-three. The solid waste fee does not increase in FY twenty-three. However, there are planned increases in FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five for ten percent and two percent, respectively. I first wanted to take a minute to explain how we develop our recommendations. The first is when the requested items do not total the budgeted amount. We also make recommendations to reduce the appropriation when there are no programmatic changes but the historical expenditures are not reaching the budgeted amount. We evaluated the support and explanations provided and have noted when a recommendation is due to lack of support. There are other types of recommendations that we describe in more detail during the following slides. I am now going to go through our recommendations for the proposed operating budget by department and by fund, following the order of the ABAO. We are recommending three reductions to the Board of Supervisors of Elections for expenditures budgeted in FY twenty-three for the primary election that were already purchased or encumbered with FY twenty-two funds. In contractual services, we recommend reducing operating equipment services by one point four million dollars. The Elections FY twenty-three budget request is for four point three million dollars. The FY twenty-three budget estimate included costs of one million four hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred dollars for the FY twenty-two third and fourth quarter state voting system billings and for lease costs of ballot drop box security cameras that were already budgeted and encumbered in FY twenty-two. These funds will remain encumbered utilizing FY twenty-two funds, but will not be paid until FY twenty-three due to the gubernatorial primary election being moved to FY twenty-three. We recommend reducing the FY twenty-three budget to two million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred dollars to account for the encumbered costs in FY twenty-two. Also in contractual services, we recommend reducing legal notices by forty thousand dollars. The Elections FY twenty-three budget request is seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars. Elections provided us with an update that forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars in election ballot specimens has already been ordered for the gubernatorial primary election. Therefore, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-three budget to thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars to account for the ballot specimen costs that will be paid in FY twenty-two. In supplies and materials, we recommend reducing public information mail by twenty-five thousand dollars. The Elections FY twenty-three budget request is seventy-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Elections provided us with an update that forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars in mailing costs for election ballot specimens has already been paid related to the gubernatorial primary election. Therefore, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-three budget to fifty thousand seven hundred dollars to account for the ballot specimen mailing costs paid in FY twenty-two. In Bureau one eighty, Facilities Management of Central Services and Contractual Services, we recommend reducing water and sewer by forty thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of eight hundred thousand forty-one nine hundred dollars for water and sewer costs. This proposed budget includes an increase of a hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars by central services from the FY twenty two budget of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars due to the plan to add four new locations to the existing inventory during FY twenty three. Water and sewer actual costs have on average been decreasing markedly. We recommend reducing the FY twenty three proposed budget to eight hundred and one thousand nine hundred dollars. Our calculated estimate considered central services estimated expenditures for FY twenty two plus inflation, weather volatility, and the estimated cost for the newly added locations. In Bureau three eighty, Aging and Disability Resource Center in the Department of Aging in Personal Services, we recommend reducing contractual pay by fifteen thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to pay fee-for-service positions, including case managers for specific programs. Historically, actual costs have not crossed two hundred thousand dollars. Based on historical expenditures, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to two hundred thousand five hundred dollars. Our calculated estimate considered the actual expenditures for FY twenty one plus inflation. In Bureau three ninety, Long Term Care in Personal Services, we also recommend reducing contractual pay by seventy-five thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of six hundred and two thousand dollars to pay contractual employees for long-term care support. Aging failed to substantiate the full budget request. Instead, they only provided a contractual employee listing that totaled five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and, and included five vacancies. Also, historically, actual costs have not crossed five hundred thousand dollars, even though the FY twenty two budget is five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Specifically, annual expenditures ranged from four hundred and four thousand dollars in FY eighteen to a high of four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in FY twenty one. Based on historical expenditures, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to five hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Our calculated estimate considered the actual expenditures for FY twenty one plus inflation. For the Department of Health in Bureau five fifty, which is School Health and Support, Personal Services, we recommend reducing contractual pay by six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of eight million six hundred twenty thousand seven dollars to pay for contractual employees. According to the Health Department, it currently is experiencing a fifty percent turnover rate in contractual pay, and historically, actual costs have not crossed seven million dollars, even though the FY twenty two budget totaled seven point nine million dollars. Specifically, annual expenditures ranged from three point five million dollars in FY twenty to a high of six point three million dollars in FY nineteen. We recommend reducing the FY twenty three proposed budget to seven million nine hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred dollars, which is, was the amount budgeted in FY twenty two. As a result of our recommendation to cut Object seven zero one six, which is contractual pay, we also recommend a corresponding cut to the contractual FICA object code by forty-five thousand dollars to bring the budget down to the required federal contribution of seven point six five percent. For the Office of Information Technology in Contractual Services, we recommend reducing fiber optics support services by one hundred and forty thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of four hundred thousand dollars for fiber optics maintenance and unplanned fiber optics repairs, which is an increase of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars from the FY twenty two budget. The Office of Information Technology failed to provide a detailed breakdown to substantiate the budget request and a valid justification for why the budget increased from FY twenty two. Annual expenditures ranged from eighty-one thousand in FY nineteen to a high of two hundred and twenty-six thousand in FY twenty. We recommend reducing the FY twenty three proposed budget of four hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is the amount budgeted in FY twenty two. For the Office of Finance in Bureau one hundred and thirty-five, Billings and Customer Service in Contractual Services, we recommend reducing the Financial Audit Services by twenty-five thousand dollars. This object is used to pay the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxations fees related to administering the Homestead Tax Credit Program. Finance's FY twenty three budget request was one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The budget for FY twenty two was also one hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and Finance provided us with an update that known FY twenty two costs are sixty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Based on historic billings from the state, costs incurred through April are generally the total amount billed and have gradually been on a decline. Specifically, annual expenditures have declined from one hundred and nine thousand in FY eighteen to sixty-one thousand in FY twenty one, which have not crossed seventy thousand dollars since FY twenty. Based on historical expenditures and the most recent two-year average, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to eighty-seven thousand dollars. For the Office of Finance, non-departmental, in Bureau one hundred, one, one fifty-five for debt service, Contractual Services, we recommend reducing consultants by one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Finance, non-departmental's FY twenty three budget request is for five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. The, the budget estimate contained duplicate consultant expenses related to costs and fees for the annual bond sale activity for the water and wastewater debt service, which is separately budgeted in the Water and Wastewater Sinking Fund. We identified the same duplicate consultant request by Finance during the FY twenty two annual budget review. As a result, this caused an overstatement of consulting fees totaling one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We recommend eliminating the duplicate budgeted funds. A similar situation occurred with the Water and Wastewater Debt Service budget. Also in Bureau one fifty-five, in Object eight, six, three, three, which is Other Costs of Issue, we recommend reducing Other Costs of Issue by eighty-five thousand dollars. Finance, non-departmental's FY twenty three budget request is nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Finance provided support that substantiated a buzz budget estimate less than nine hundred thousand dollars. As a result, we recommend eliminating the excess while allowing for inflation. In the Office of the Sheriff, there were three areas that were unable to be substantiated, and therefore, we are recommending to remove. In Contractual Services, the Sheriff's Office Other Professional Services object has an FY twenty three requested budget of ninety thousand seven hundred dollars, which consists of kenneling costs for the six canine deputy handlers. Handler. Resulting in an estimate of eighty-four thousand seven hundred dollars to its budget request. We recommend reducing this budget request by eighty thousand dollars, which accounts for any additional kenneling costs that may arise. Also in Contractual Services, the Sheriff's Office Lease Rate Tech Replacement, FY twenty three proposed budget of twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars was requested in error. The county plans to move lease rate tech replacement costs to the Public Safety Tech Enhancement Capital Project. We recommend eliminating this error in its entirety. In Capital Outlay, the Sheriff's Office erroneously included seven thousand five hundred dollars to the Automotive Equipment Object Code with the FY twenty three requested budget of forty-two thousand five hundred dollars that was separately requested for miscellaneous equipment, Object Code eight, five, four, three. As a result, we recommend reducing the Automotive Equipment Budget Request to thirty-five thousand dollars. In the Office of Transportation, under Grants and Contributions and Other, we recommend reducing grant fund contribution by two hundred and five thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to pay the county required match for applicable transportation-related grants. Based on the supporting documentation provided by the Budget Office, the large urban grant will not be received, and the Budget Office plans to amend the Grant Special Revenue Fund. As a result, the corresponding county requested budget match is overstated by about two hundred and five thousand dollars. We recommend removing the excess proposed budget, which reduces the FY twenty three budget request to four hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. For the Orphans Court in Personal Services, the Special Pays Budget Request for FY twenty three of sixteen thousand two hundred dollars was included in error. We recommend eliminating the Special Pays Budget in its entirety. For the Department of Public Libraries, Personal Services, we recommend reducing salaries and wages by seventy thousand dollars. Within this requested salaries budget, Public Libraries has requested a budget for six new positions, two assistant managers, and four library associates totaling three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The salary for each of the six new positions are budgeted above the starting salary outlined in the pay scale provided by Public Libraries. Public Libraries did not budget the new positions in accordance with the county's practice of budgeting new positions at their applicable starting salary. Specifically, Public Libraries budgeted the total new position salaries seventy thousand dollars higher than the applicable starting salary of the new positions. When a new position is requested, it is county practice to budget the starting salary for each position, even if the position will likely be filled at a higher salary. To keep Public Libraries consistent with the county practice, we recommend reducing the budget to fifteen million nine hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars, that cut of seventy thousand dollars. Also, in Personal Services, we recommend reducing special pays by fifteen thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of one million eight hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the cost of hourly workers in the branches and at headquarters. A list of hourly workers provided shows the total cost to be one point eight million dollars. We updated that list to account for the increase in minimum wage starting January twenty twenty-three. The revised amount totals one point eight two four million dollars. As a result, there is an excess proposed budget of fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. Therefore, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to, to one million eight hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. In Contractual Services, we recommend reducing Other Professional Services by forty thousand dollars. Public Libraries failed to provide supporting documentation to substantiate the seventy-five thousand dollar request for the risk management audit. According to Public Libraries, the request is the department's best guess based on the risk management audit currently being conducted in the county. They did not disclose which county agency is conducting a risk management audit. However, our office is currently conducting a risk assessment that covers the entire county, including other services, which costs forty thousand dollars less than the Public Libraries' requests. Therefore, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to one hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred dollars. In Contractual Services, we also recommend reducing maintenance services by fifty thousand dollars. Due to FY twenty two expenditures coming in significantly lower than the budgeted amount and the lack of support for the FY twenty three request, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget request to fifty-three thousand six hundred dollars. For the Department of Recreation and Parks in Personal Services, we recommend reducing temporary pay by two hundred and forty thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of five point eight million dollars to pay for temporary employees. Annual expenditures range from two point nine million in FY twenty one to a high of four million in FY nineteen, pre-COVID. The FY twenty two budget is four point eight million dollars. Based on month-to-month historical spending habits, we estimate that total expenditures for FY twenty two will be approximately three point seven million dollars. Based on various factors, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three proposed budget to five million five hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Specifically, our calculated estimate considered the following. We used the pre-COVID level of expenditures at four million dollars in FY nineteen. We also included the expenditures spent in contractual pay and special pays in FY nineteen since these objects incur expenses, but did not have an FY twenty three proposed budget. And to account for the historic wage increases, we added a five percent increase to the FY nineteen actuals. Although Recreation and Parks failed to substantiate the increase of one million dollars to the proposed budget from FY twenty two, we included it as we understand it is expensive for Recreation and Parks to implement the necessary wage increases and add staffing for two parks. This brings the total amount to approximately five point five million dollars, which results in us recommending a reduction of two hundred and forty thousand to the FY twenty three budget request. Also in Personal Services, we recommend reducing pension by sixty thousand two hundred dollars for a duplicate amount already included in the budget for the four oh one A defined contribution. In Bureau three twenty-five, we recommend reducing grants and contributions for, by fifteen thousand dollars. Recreation and Parks provided two lists detailing the grants totaling five hundred and two thousand dollars, which it intends to reward to different organizations. As a result, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three proposed budget to five hundred and four thousand dollars. In Bureau three thirty, Contractual Services, we recommend reducing maintenance services by fifteen thousand dollars. This object has a requested budget of eighty-seven thousand dollars, which includes expenditures related to the maintenance of facility operating equipment that are not covered by county departments, such as pool filters, heating systems, security systems, et cetera. Recreation and Parks failed to provide a cost breakdown or supporting documentation to support the budget request. Historically, actual costs have not crossed sixty-two thousand dollars. Specifically, annual expenditures range from forty-two thousand five hundred dollars in FY eighteen to a high of sixty-one thousand dollars in FY twenty one. Based on historic expenditures, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to seventy-two thousand dollars. Also in Bureau three thirty, we recommend reducing other services by thirty thousand dollars. This object includes expenditures related to bus transportation for summer program participants and year-round programs. Recreation and Parks requests a budget of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for FY twenty three. They failed to provide a cost breakdown or supporting documentation to substantiate the budget request. A similar situation incurred in our prior annual budget review. The FY twenty two budget is three hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred dollars, and as of May twenty-seventh, they've only expended twenty-five hundred dollars. Historically, actual costs have not crossed three hundred thousand dollars. Based on historic expenditures and taking a conservative approach, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three proposed budget to three hundred and forty thousand nine hundred dollars. And for the Department of Social Services in Bureau five hundred in Personal Services, we recommend reducing contractual pay by one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to pay for contractual employees. Social Services failed to substantiate the entire budget request. Instead, they provided a contractual employee listing that totaled nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and included four vacancies. Historically, actual costs have not crossed six hundred thousand dollars, even though the FY twenty two budget totaled six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Based on historical expenditures, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Our calculated estimate considered the actual expenditures for FY twenty one plus inflation and an additional buffer of two hundred thousand dollars. In Bureau five oh five in Personal Services, we recommend reducing special pays by fifty thousand dollars. This object is used to supplement pay provided to state employee directors. However, this budget is not being spent. Based on historical expenditures, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Also in Bureau five oh five, we recommend reducing contractual pay by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty three budget of one point three million dollars to pay for contractual employees. Social Services failed to substantiate the entire budget request. Instead, they only provided a contractual employee listing that totaled one point three million and included four vacancies. Also, historically, actual costs have not crossed one million dollars, even though the FY twenty two budget totaled one point five million dollars. Based on historical expenditures, we recommend reducing the FY twenty three budget to one point one million dollars. Our calculated estimate considered the actual expenditures for FY twenty one plus inflation. The recommendation for an amendment to Pay as You Go and the Impact Fee Special Revenue Fund are reconcile reconciliation items that will update are reconcil reconciliation items that will update based on any future amendments, including the supplemental, and will be updated at that time. These amounts are placeholders based on our recommendations. In the Recreation and Parks Childcare Fund, we recommend reducing other supplies and materials by fifteen thousand to four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Our calculated estimate considered the fund's actual costs and inflation. In the Water and Wastewater Operating Fund in Personal Services, we recommend increasing the turnover by four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. This object is calculated to determine the savings projected to occur in the Personal Services category due to vacancies. Public Works included a turnover amount of one point seven million dollars or three point nine percent of the Personal Services category. We determined this object should be increased to further four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, increasing turnover to approximately five percent of Personal Services based on the historic actual turnover rate. In Contractual Services, we recommend reducing laboratory testing services by seventy thousand dollars. The Laboratory Testing Services object includes various water and wastewater facility quality and other testing. We recommend reducing the FY twenty-three budget request to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Our calculated estimate considered the fund's actual costs provided for new testing and sampling and inflation. Also in Contractual Services, we recommend reducing Management Services by ninety thousand dollars. The Management Services object has a requested budget of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, which includes cleaning of gravity sewer lines, studies, classes, and consulting services to update a pre-treatment limit study. We recommend reducing the FY twenty-three proposed budget to six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Our calculated estimate considered the fund's actual costs provided for new consulting services and inflation. We also recommend reducing utility water and sewer purchases by one hundred thousand dollars. The Utility Water and Sewer Purchases Budget Request of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars mainly covers water sources from Baltimore City for northern areas of the county if needed. According to Public Works in FY nineteen, due to capital investments in the water supply system, the county has been able to supply water to residents in the northern part of the county. And the FY twenty-three request is a contingency to cover the cost of tapping back into the Baltimore City water supply in the event of an emergency. However, this fund al- already carries a budget of unanticipated needs that Public Works can use for emergency situations that arise. Therefore, we recommend reducing the Utility Water and Sewer Purchases FY twenty-three proposed budget to thirty-five thousand dollars. In the Water and Wastewater Sinking Fund Bureau six seventy-five, in Contractual Services, we recommend reducing consultants by one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As mentioned earlier in the Office of Finance, a similar situation was identified last year, and we recommend eliminating the duplicate budgeted funds. In Debt Service, we also recommend reducing other costs of issue by one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The fund's FY twenty-three budget request is seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Finance provided support that substantiated a budget estimate less than six hundred thousand dollars. As a result, we recommend eliminating the excess amount while allowing for inflation. In the Garage Vehicle Replacement Fund Capital Atlay, we recommend reducing automotive equipment by twenty-eight thousand dollars to remove costs related to a vehicle that has already been encumbered utilizing FY twenty-two funds. And in the Reforestation Fund Grants, Contributions, and Others category, we recommend reducing non-county expenditures by two hundred thousand dollars. This object has a requested FY twenty-three budget of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to pay grants to the organizations for general planting projects throughout the county. However, the Chesapeake Bay Trust was due to get a two hundred thousand dollar grant for FY twenty-two to support a large project that recently fell through, and the FY twenty-two funds are no longer needed. Furthermore, inspections and permits failed to substantiate the need for the Chesapeake Bay Trust to receive two hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-three. As a result, we recommend reducing the fund's proposed budget to sixty thousand dollars. I will now go through our recommendations for the proposed capital budget. In the Water Capital Class, the Glen Burnie High Zone Project has an available project balance of one point one million dollars as of May twenty-seventh. The project is complete and the last child project task is in performance. Based on the latest budget estimate provided, there is one million dollars in excess project funds. Therefore, we recommend reducing prior approved water bonds by one million dollars. For the Dorsey Line System Upgrade Project, based on updated cost estimates, the project cost was reduced by two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We recommend reducing the project budget by two hundred thousand dollars. In the Wastewater Capital Class for WRF Infrastructure Upgrade Ratchet, the available project balance was one point six million dollars as of May twenty-seventh, and the administration is requesting an additional one point one five million in FY twenty-three. Average annual expenditures for FY eighteen through FY twenty-one were nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. In FY twenty-two, one point one five million has been expended and encumbered. Based on historical expenditures, expected activity, and the available balance, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-three request by five hundred thousand dollars. For the Cox Creek WRF Non-ENR Project, the Improvements Construction Contract Award was two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars less than the budget amount estimated. Therefore, we recommend reducing project funds by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This leaves thirty-five thousand in added construction contingencies. The Maryland City WRF Utility Water Pump Replacement Construction Contract Award was ninety-seven thousand dollars less than the budget amount estimated. Therefore, we recommend reducing project funds by seventy thousand dollars. This leaves twenty-seven thousand in added construction contingencies. The Brockbridge Road Sewer Replacement Available Project Balance as of May twenty-seventh was two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The administration is requesting to reduce the balance by one hundred and seventeen thousand in FY twenty-three. The department has provided an update that an additional one hundred and fourteen thousand in wastewater bonds can be released, leaving one thousand dollars left for overhead costs. The Cox Creek Grit System Improvement Project Available Project Balance was nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. The administration is requesting five hundred and thirty-six thousand in wastewater bonds for FY twenty-three. The department has provided an update. The funds requested for FY twenty-three are no longer needed due to bids coming in lower than expected. Therefore, we recommend eliminating the FY twenty-three wastewater bond request of five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. In the General County Capital Class for the Agriculture Preservation Program Project, there is an available project balance of almost five million dollars. No funds are requested for FY twenty-three. However, after settlement of all three potential settlements, the available project balance will be almost four point six million dollars. Based on the historical activity, available project balance, and anticipated settlements, we recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by one million dollars. This reduction would leave the project with three point five million dollars for future purchases. For the Fiber Network Project, the available project balance was one point four seven million dollars. The average annual expenditure from FY eighteen to FY twenty-one for this project was approximately eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The FY twenty-three request is seven hundred and fifty thousand. Based on the defined need, historical expenditures, and the available balance, we recommend reducing prior approved by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This reduction would leave one point seven seven two million available for spending in the project. For the Additional Salt Storage Capacity Project, the funds requested exceed the amount needed based on project budgets. The department agreed that these funds are not needed in the project. We recommend reducing the FY twenty-three request by three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. In the Board of Education Capital Class Upgrade Various Schools Project, we recommend increasing FY twenty-three Other State Grants by two hundred thousand dollars and increasing FY twenty-three Laurel Racetrack by forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and six dollars to reflect additional grant funding anticipated. Similarly, for the Athletic Stadium Improvements Project, we recommend increasing FY twenty-three Other State Grants by two point six million to reflect additional grant funding anticipated. In the Roads and Bridges Capital Class Pedestrian Improvement SHA Project, as of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the available project balance was one point four million dollars. The project also had four hundred and eleven thousand in encumbered funds. The highest level of annual expenditures since FY eighteen was in FY twenty for four hundred and eleven thousand. Since the available project balance is more than three times the highest annual activity in the project over the last five years, we recommend deleting the FY twenty-three request of five hundred thousand dollars. For the Route Three Improvements Project, the budget request included all funding for the project in FY twenty-three and twenty-four. However, the department is scheduled to advertise for construction contract bids in FY twenty-six. Therefore, construction funds can be deferred until FY twenty-six. The department agreed that the project needs four hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-three for design and land, one hundred and fifty thousand in FY twenty-five for utility costs, and the remaining funds in FY twenty-six. Therefore, we recommend the following. Reduce FY twenty-three PGO by seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Restore FY twenty-four PGO by seventy seven hundred thousand, seventy-nine. Seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Reduce FY twenty-four PPI bonds by one point eight eight seven million. Reduce FY twenty-four Highway Impact Fees District Four by six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Increase FY twenty-six PPI bonds by one point eight eight seven million. And increase FY twenty-six Highway Impact Fees District Four by six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. For the Pleasant Plains Road Safety Improvement Project, the budget estimate developed for this project included several errors totaling eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The department agreed that the project budget was overstated by this amount. We recommend reducing FY twenty-three PPI bonds by three hundred and seventy-three thousand, deleting FY twenty-three PGO by three hundred and fifty-five thousand, and reducing FY twenty-four PPI bonds by one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. In the DeValle Adding Access Improvement Project, the budget estimate developed for this project included an error in the construction cost estimate that resulted in a reduction of one million dollars in the project cost. The department agreed that the cost was overstated. We recommend deleting FY twenty-five General County Bonds by nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and reducing FY twenty-five Highway Impact Fee District Two by eighty-three thousand. Additionally, the department indicated that an additional eight, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand is needed in FY twenty-three. If the administration determines additional funds beyond that included in the proposed budget is needed, it will need to be included in the administration's supplemental budget request. In the Library Capital Class, the Library Project Project Plan Available Project Balance is approximately fifteen thousand dollars as of May twenty-seventh. The FY twenty-three request is for two hundred and fifty thousand. For the department, all the funds will be, per the department, all the funds will be used for updating the library system master plan. The last update was performed during FY eighteen, which cost approximately one hundred and sixty-three thousand. We recommend reducing the FY twenty-three request by fifty thousand dollars, which will leave the department with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to perform the plan update. The department agrees with the fifteen thousand dollar reduction, fifty thousand dollar reduction. For the New Glen Burnie Library Project, prior approved appropriation for this project is one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Funds were approved to conduct a study for the new library. Based on the most recent forecast, the department estimates that the total cost of the study will be approximately ninety-two thousand. The department does not anticipate any further expenditures before the design phase starts in FY twenty-four. Therefore, there is fifty-five thousand dollars in excess funds in this project. We recommend a reduction of fifty thousand in prior approved general county bonds, and the department agrees with the reduction. The Rivera Beach Community Library Project is currently in construction. Approximately nine point one seven million dollars was budgeted for the construction contract, while the construction contract bids came in lower and the contract was awarded for approximately eight point eight million. In addition, the department budgeted a design contingency at nineteen point five percent of the design contract. This contingency is usually budgeted at ten percent of the design contract. Based on our analysis, there are excess project funds. Therefore, we recommend reducing the project budget by one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. In the Recreation and Parks Capital Class, the South Shore Trail Phase One Waterbury to Maryland Route Three is complete. Budgeted cost estimates exceeded actual costs by ninety-nine thousand dollars. We recommend reducing the project budget by forty-five thousand, which would leave fifty thousand in the project for final invoices for this task. The department agreed with the forty-five thousand dollar reduction in project funds. The Greenways Parkland and Open Space Project had an available project balance of approximately seven point one one million. The department anticipates spending approximately one point nine one million in county funds during FY twenty-two, leaving one point oh four million dollars in county funds available for FY twenty-three. The FY twenty-three request for county funding is one point four six million. The department advised that these funds will be used for purchases to help the land, help reach the land purchase goals established in the green infrastructure plan. Based on the one million dollars of county funds from the available project balance that can be used to fund purchases in FY twenty-three, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-three funding request by five hundred thousand dollars. This leaves the county with two million dollars in county funds, which is five hundred and forty thousand dollars more than the identified need for FY twenty-three. For the Shoreline Erosion Control Project, two projects are complete. Actual costs for these tasks were less than the budget estimates, resulting in excess funds totaling one hundred thousand dollars. We recommend reducing the project by one hundred thousand dollars, and the department agreed with the reduction. For the Park Renovation Project, the available project balance was four hundred and twenty-eight thousand as of May twenty-seventh. The FY twenty-three request is for nine million dollars, which includes two point seven million of county funds, while the remaining six point three million are grant funds. Annual expenditures reached a high of six point six million in FY twenty-one during recent years. Based on the historical activity and the FY twenty-three requests, we re- we recommend reducing the FY twenty-three request of nine million dollars by one million. As of May twenty-seventh, the available project balance for the Dairy Farm Project was five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The department needs funding for an update of the master plan and for the required National Environmental Policy Act review process. Per a letter from the Navy, the review process will cost approximately two hundred and five thousand dollars. The department has not yet contracted for the master plan update, but based on a similar project, the department estimates that it will cost one hundred and forty-two thousand. Since no other tasks are planned, we recommend reducing the excess prior approved funds by two fifteen. The department agreed with this reduction. The Arendal Swim Center renovation phase two is complete. Budget estimates for this task exceed actual costs by forty-three thousand. In addition, the construction contract for the Arendal Swim Center renovation phase four was awarded for one hundred and fifty-seven thousand less than the budget estimate. We recommend reducing the project budget by one hundred thousand dollars of the two hundred thousand in excess funds identified, leaving funds for contingencies for the task in progress. The Eisenhower Course Improvement is complete. Actual costs for this task were less than the budget estimates, resulting in excess funds totaling ninety-one thousand. The department advised that it is awaiting as-built survey and plans. We recommend reducing the project budget by forty-five thousand, leaving forty-six thousand for the as-built survey and plans. The Hot Sox Park Improvements Project FY twenty-three request is for three hundred and eight thousand. The department identified project tasks with estimated cost totaling two hundred and fifty-six thousand. Therefore, the request exceeds identified tasks by fifty-one thousand, and we recommend reducing FY twenty-three general county bonds by fifty thousand dollars. The Odenton Park Improvements Project FY twenty-three request is for one million, fifty-three thousand dollars, which includes five hundred, uh, four hundred and fifty-three thousand in county funding and six hundred thousand in other state grants. The department advised that the request is for Odenton Park Improvement Phase Two. The budget request exceeds the department's cost estimates by one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. We recommend reducing the project budget by one hundred thousand dollars. The Brooklyn Park Community Center Project Available Project Balance was nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand in county bonds as of May twenty-seventh. The FY twenty-three request of three point four million is made up of federal and state grants. The department intends to start working on the design of the community center building in FY twenty-three and expects to receive a majority of the construction funds, eight point five three million, from an unknown private partner in FY twenty-four. To prevent the county from using county funds on the design and construction of the project prior to securing private funding, we recommend adding qualifying language to the ABAO, preventing the department from spending available county funds on the design of the community center until a private partner has been identified and until a private partner has been identified and construction funding to complete the project has been secured. The ADA Compliance Implementation Project was funded for the first time during FY twenty-two with three hundred and fifty thousand in General County Bonds. As of May twenty-seventh, the available project balance was three hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. The FY twenty-three request is for seven hundred thousand dollars. There is no funding request in FY twenty-four, while the request for the rest of the out-years is three fifty. The department advised that the funding request was pulled forward from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-three due to the availability of paygo funding in FY twenty-three. Since the department has not spent three, the three hundred and fifty thousand in available funds it received in FY twenty-two, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-three request of seven hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand, and moving the remaining three hundred and fifty thousand to FY twenty-four. The Odenton Library Community Park FY twenty-three request is for two million dollars, which includes five hundred thousand in General County Bonds and one point five million in other state grants. The project is currently in the design phase, and the construction contract bid and award period will not start until FY twenty-four. According to the department, a matching fund requirement was waived for the state grant of one point five million. Since there is no matching fund requirement and sufficient funds are appropriated for design, we recommend reducing FY twenty-three project funds by five hundred thousand and increasing FY twenty-four project funds by the same amount. Trail Spurs Connector CW is a new project, and the FY twenty-three request is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The department was unable to provide any documentation on the basis for the amount requested, but advised that this is based on historical knowledge and similar projects such as the Safe Route for Schools Sidewalks Project. The department also stated that it is requesting more in FY twenty-three as compared to the out-years due to the availability of paygo funding in FY twenty-three. Annual expenditures incurred for the school sidewalks project reached a high of two hundred thousand dollars in FY eighteen. Based on the lack of supporting documentation and historical expenditures from a similar project, we recommend reducing FY twenty-three paygo by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This leaves the department with three hundred thousand dollars, which is one hundred thousand more than the highest amount spent by a similar project. In the Water Quality Improvements Capital Class, the Cowhead Branch Retro Project is complete, and any additional work required will be performed in a new project. We recommend deleting the excess project ones of one point three million dollars. The, the department agreed that this amount was not needed. We recommend reducing prior approved General County Bonds by five hundred thousand and prior approved other federal grants by eight hundred thousand. In the Judging Capital Class, the Southern River HW Judging Two Project is included in error in the calculation. The department advised that the correction resulted in a decrease in the project budget of seventy-six thousand. We recommend reducing FY twenty-three General County Bonds by seventy-six thousand. The Yanson Sot Works Creek Judging Project also included an error in the calculation. The department advised that the correction resulted in a decrease in the project budget of nineteen thousand. Therefore, we recommend deleting FY twenty-three General County Bonds of nineteen thousand. In the Watershed Protection and Restoration Capital Class, the MROFO four project had an available project balance of one hundred and twenty-four thousand as of May twenty-seventh. Project tasks are complete, and the department is de-appropriating fifty thousand from prior approved project funds in FY twenty-three. Based on the available project balance and that project tasks are complete, we recommend reducing project funds by an additional forty thousand. The department agreed with the additional reduction. The MROFO two project had an available project balance of a hundred and six thousand as of May twenty-seventh. According to the department, the project is in performance and funds are only needed for final costs. We recommend reducing project funds by seventy thousand dollars. The department agreed with the reduction. Project PT, Project PT PC O one had an available project balance of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand as of May twenty-seventh. Of the four project tasks, two are complete. One task is in performance and one was canceled. Funds are encumbered for the task that is in performance, therefore, we recommend reducing the current available balance to remove the funds budgeted for the canceled task. The PNPC O one had an available project balance of five sixty-three on May twenty-seventh. According to the department, Patapsco Non-Title Public Ponds Phase One is complete, and the department estimates exceeded actual costs by a hundred and fifteen thousand. We recommend reducing project funds by a hundred and fifteen thousand, and the department agreed with the reduction. Project SEOFO one had an available project balance of two hundred and sixty-one thousand as of May twenty-seventh. According to the department, one project task, Sappington Hill Pond retrofit had been, has been completed, and the other project task, Southern Minor Outfall Restoration, will be closed and no further action taken. Therefore, we recommend reducing project funds by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the department agreed with this reduction. The SEPCO one project had an available project balance of nine hundred and eighty-three thousand as of May twenty-seventh. According to the department, two out of the four project tasks, Mills Race Public Pond Restoration and Southern River Public Pond Restoration are complete. Budgeted cost estimates exceeded actual costs for these tasks by seventy thousand dollars. We recommend reducing project funds by seventy thousand, and the department agreed with this reduction. Project SOOFO one had an available project balance of six hundred and twenty-one thousand as of May twenty-seventh. Project tasks are complete, and the department is de-appropriating three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from prior approved project funds in FY twenty-three. Based on the available project balance and that project tasks are complete, we recommend reducing project funds by an additional one hundred and five thousand, leaving the remaining funds for final costs. The department agreed with this additional reduction. Last one. The WPRP Land Acquisition Project has an available project balance of nine hundred and six thousand dollars. The department advised that it will utilize the available funds for another round of property acquisitions during FY twenty-three. According to the department, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was spent in the first round, and it expects to spend six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand on acquisitions and another hundred thousand for demolition and remediation. Based on the available, the current available project balance and the department's response, we recommend reducing project funds by a hundred thousand, leaving eight hundred and six thousand for future acquisitions, demolition, and remediation. As previously mentioned, Appendix A is a summary of new positions. Appendix B is a summary by department of the proposed operating recommendations. And Appendix C is a summary of the proposed capital recommendations. I would like to thank the council for listening patiently to our presentation and hope you'll consider our recommendations. This presentation and our recommendations show the end result of a significant amount of work by all involved in this process. So I again thank my team for their commitment to performing our independent review of the budget. I also want to thank the many people in the administration as a whole, and specifically the Office of the Budget that helped us in this review. I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to supporting you through the remainder of the process. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowler, and I will just echo the thanks that you provided right there at the end of your presentation. Everyone in your office, everyone in the budget office, you guys have already provided so much help and information as we have been engaged in this process. At this time, my council colleagues have the opportunity to ask any questions if you would like. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Let me get you guys back in grid view so I can see everyone. Okay, I now, I can see that there are no hands raised. I imagine we will have questions further down the road, but none for now. So we are at the point where, where we will allow the administration time to respond or rebut to the auditor's recommendations. The council has planned to take a recess until one PM, but I'd like to confirm with Mr. Trumbauer that this is an appropriate amount of time. If you need more or if you need less, Mr. Trumbauer, what do you think?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. Yeah, uh, so we scheduled for one o'clock, and I think we ended at a decent time, so let's keep that. If something comes up that is going to require more time, we'll let you know. But at this point, I'm pretty confident that you all can have a nice lunch break. We'll reconvene at one. I'll go through a very quick spiel, and then everyone can go about their day.
Great, well, thank you very much. Then at this time, the council stands in recess until one PM, and we will see you then. The June first, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Anorindel County Council is now reconvened. At this time, I'm happy to introduce our Budget Officer, Mr. Chris Trumbauer, who will be presenting the administration's rebuttal to our auditor's recommended cuts.
Great, good afternoon, and thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I'm Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I'd like to begin my remarks by thanking Michelle Bowler, the county auditor, and her staff for the hard work their office has done over the last month. Ms. Bowler and I have had an open line of communication throughout this process. I think that's been helpful for both sides and for all sides. There's very much behind the scenes work that happens in the month of May, and it's a very hectic time. So I believe Michelle and I agree that there's always room for improvement, and we're both committed to that, and I look forward to working with her after this budget is finalized to make next year's process even smoother. I'd also like to thank the county's budget office team. Nobody's looking forward to June fifteenth more than they are, I can assure you. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge the department directors and their budget staff. They've been good partners in this budget process, which started more than six months ago for them. So County Executive Pittman is very proud of this budget. The proposed budget before you funds important counting priorities, provides record funding to the school system, bolsters our reserves, cuts taxes, keeps most utility rates unchanged, and protects our triple-A bond rating. As I've said before, the administration's job is to introduce a great budget. The council's job is to make that budget even better. We look forward to working with you over the next two weeks to approve what I believe will be one of the best budgets in county history. With that, I will jump into the administration's comments on the auditor's presentation and recommended amendments to the budget. Regarding the Spending Affordability Committee remarks, we agree with the auditor's analysis, but it's important to remember that the committee made its recommendations all the way back in January. That was prior to the most recent economic indicators being released and prior to us, the county receiving the much larger-than-expected income tax distribution this spring. The chair referenced this in his remarks on April twenty-ninth. Regarding the auditor's caution about the amount of fund balance and paygo in the FY twenty-three budget, we wholeheartedly agree, which is why we program the fund balance into the capital budget and one-time expenses in the operating budget. I'll remind the council that this budget also reduces the new debt authorization by ten million dollars a year or six, sixty million dollars over the course of the six-year program. The auditor's analysis on debt affordability shows that using reasonable assumptions like Scenario One, the county will meet its guidelines for the next twenty-five years and beyond. I find that pretty extraordinary. Regarding, regarding the rainy day fund, we use the twenty-one budgetary fund balance. The auditor used the GAAP fund balance or GAAP fund balance. That results in about a two million dollar difference because the gap is lower by two million. But we use budget all throughout the budget book, so we think that's the correct way to account for that. And in FY twenty-three, the ending balance, according to our calculations, will be at the maximum allowable under the proposed seven percent limit, uh, which is a hundred and thirty-two point seven million dollars. That's seven percent of the general fund. The auditor's analysis on the CIO contingency fund is correct. We've been fortunate in the last several years that the county has not had to tap the fund for large appropriations. However, I will remind you, just one large snowstorm could cost ten million dollars or more. So we believe in a two point one billion dollar operating budget, a contingency fund of twelve million dollars is appropriate. That's only about point six percent. At this time, I'll now respond to the individual recommendations in the operating and capital budgets. Council, you should have in your possession a table of the auditor's recommendations with our corresponding admin position on each one. You guys have that? Because I'm not going to share a screen because no one wants to look at that. You guys good? Okay. So we're going to start out with operating. We are going to agree partially with the First Board of Elections' recommended cut of one point four million dollars. What's going on here is they shifted the actual primary election from one fiscal year to the other. So the department had a bunch of things budgeted for twenty-two. We're now carrying a lot of that over to twenty-three when the actual election is. But we have been able to follow up with the department, and they've confirmed that there are some of those expenses that will be billed in, in this current fiscal year. So what we're going to do now is we're going to agree to eight hundred thousand dollars of that cut, and I will commit to working with the auditor over the next week to maybe fine-tune that amount. We're using an estimate based on what Board of Elections got from their partners at the state. So that number may go up or down a little bit, but we want to get a good number, but we will partially agree to that. The other two cuts for forty thousand and for twenty-five thousand, uh, those are good cuts, and we agree to those. For the water and sewer cut at Central Services, uh, forty thousand dollars, um, that's a good cut, but, uh, we're going to put an asterisk by it, and we're going to ask you guys not to take that cut because with us taking over the Crownsville, uh, property and some other things, there's a lot of uncertainty with what the water and sewer, uh, total bill is going to be. So what we're worried about is if you take this cut, um, we'll end up having to put more money back eventually. So it's policy call for the council. I want to acknowledge the auditor. Michelle, this is a good cut. We're just going to ask you guys not to take it to be on the cautious side. Okay, moving on to Department of Aging, uh, the first cut for fifteen thousand dollars of contractual pay, we're okay with that. The second cut for seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, we're going to oppose that. We need this funding to fill the vacant position in the Medicare waiver program. Um, and it's also a hundred percent reimbursable, so, uh, we'd urge you not to take that cut. Next, we'll move on to Health Department. So this was a pretty big cut, six hundred ninety thousand dollars, uh, I think for contractual and the related FICA charges. This would largely affect the school nurse program. The, I think the auditor did correct analysis in that in previous years, uh, you know, they haven't hit this level. But we are having an aggressive, um, funding attempt to try and beef up the Health Bureau. There's also, uh, over a ten percent pay increase for health nurse, health nurses this year. So we would urge you guys not to take, uh, this cut. All right, our friends in the OIT Department have given us a lot of reasons why you shouldn't take the Fiber Optic Support Services cut, the hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'm not going to sit here and tell you I understand it all, but I can tell you they're very enthusiastic about opposing this cut. This is the money for the E-rate process, um, and they really don't want to, uh, have any less funding. They need this to, um, to meet their obligations under the new fiber contract with the school system. I don't even know what dark fiber is, but apparently it's important, and we should not cut this. Uh, Office of Finance, uh, we're okay with that twenty-five thousand dollar cut. And then, um, in the finance non-departmental, uh, we're going to agree to this one, but I'm going to put my, um, my chit down for a possible fourth quarter transfer requirement later in the year. This is an aggressive cut. We think we'll be okay. We acknowledge that it's a good recommendation, um, but it's going to cut it pretty close. So, uh, we're okay with it, but, um, you, you need to be lenient if we end up needing more money next year. That's the deal. Uh, okay, so on the eighty-five thousand dollar, uh, cut, same deal. So you combine those together, it's over, it's about two hundred, uh, forty thousand, and we'll agree to those. We followed up with our friends in the Sheriff Department, and, uh, we're okay with the twenty-eight four, uh, cut for the lease rate tech replacement. We're going to agree to that. But I think that there was some, uh, maybe bad communication or unintended communication between, uh, the sheriff's staff and the auditor's office. They do not want to cut the eighty thousand dollars, uh, in one time for other professional services. What that would support is a new shot detection service for the courthouse. It's a system that would, uh, react instantaneously to any, um, shots fired and help them locate what that is, uh, where that's happening. So they very much do want that program, and this is the funding that would pay for that, so they, uh, we're asking not to cut that. And then the seventy-five hundred for the automotive equipment. This is to allow mobile printers, and the sheriff's office would like to retain that funding, um, in, in this budget. So we're asking you to oppose that. Transportation, uh, this is two hundred and five thousand dollar recommended cut in the grant fund. We're going to oppose that because we need this funding to, to be the county match for over, um, I, I think it's a lot of state funding, but this, if we took this cut, then that would jeopardize, uh, six hundred and thirty-five thousand in state grants. So we'll ask you not to do that. I'm going to move on to Orphans Court, a little cut here, sixteen thousand two hundred, uh, we're okay with that. That was a, um, a double count in the PSC, I think. Three cuts in the library, um, we're okay with the salaries and wages cut, the special pays cut, and the other professional services cut. So all told, that's about a hundred and twenty-five K, uh, we can live with that. We're going to ask you not to take the fifty thousand dollars in maintenance service. We're going to ask you not to take the fifty thousand dollars in maintenance services. Again, I think the auditor's office did a good analysis on this, but the library system is pleading for us to keep this in because they do have more maintenance needs that they need this year, so they've asked us to oppose that. Okay, going to move on to Wreckin Parks. Lot going on here. We've got the sixty thousand dollar pension cut. We don't think that that's valid. We're going to ask you not to take that. The two hundred and forty thousand dollars for temp pay. Again, I think that the auditor did an analysis based on history, and we don't fault that analysis. But we are, the the department is really stepping up its its activities in programs this year. You know, we're coming out of two years of of the pandemic. We're also increasing contractual pay to fifteen dollars an hour, so that's going to affect them. So we're worried that taking this cut would would severely hamper the department's ability to put on the programs that they've already committed to and sign people up for. So we're asking not to take this cut. And then there's two small fifteen thousand dollar cuts in, one is grants and contributions. That's for the the orchestra to play a second night. I think there's a new night that would be added at Downs Park. So if the council doesn't want the symphony to play that, they could cut this, but we're asking you to let the symphony play. Then the fifteen thousand for maintenance services, this was a transfer of funding. So for the Rundle Swim Center expenditure, we're asking you to oppose that. We're okay with the thirty thousand dollars in other professional services. This is for bus transportation, and we think we can live with that cut. Okay, getting to the the home stretch here, Department of Social Services, three recommendations there. We work with the department to figure out what we could live with. The recurring cuts for contractual pay, there was two separate ones for a hundred and fifteen thousand and for two hundred and fifty thousand. Again, we don't fault the auditor's analysis on this, but after talking to the department, they really don't think that they can take that whole cut. We're willing to meet you in the middle, and we could agree to a partial cut of fifty-seven, five, and a hundred and twenty-five K. And we think the department will be able to meet all of its obligations for that, so we'll we'll agree to a partial cut there. On the fifty thousand special special pays, that's salaries for filled state positions. So we don't want to cut that. That would reduce people's current salaries, so we'd ask you to oppose that. So then if you total all these up, you're probably looking at a sheet that has a small math error on it, so I'm going to give you the correct one that just happened about five minutes ago. We're looking, there were a total of four million and seventeen thousand dollars of of cuts from the auditor's recommendations. Fifteen hundred, one million five of that was one time, and two-point-four million was recurring. And the administration is agreeing to one point five million of that, and that breaks down into eight hundred sixty-five thousand of one time and six hundred sixty-two thousand of recurrent. So that summarizes the general fund. I'm now going to move on to the utility funds or the enterprise funds, and then I'll pause, and we can do questions before we go over to capital. All right, on the childcare fund, fifteen thousand dollar, we're okay with that. Wreckin Parks can live with that. The next three on utility operating fund, four four eighty-five thousand on the turnover cut, we're going to ask you not to take that. The hiring's been delayed. We're re-advertising positions. So we calc, the budget office calculated, we think a good turnover model, and we don't want to trim it back anymore in this utility fund, so we'd ask you not to take that. On the seventy thousand for laboratory testing services, that is new requirements under the Department of the Environment, the State Department of Environment, so we don't want to cut that. We want to meet our state obligations there. And then on the ninety thousand dollars for management services, this is for the licensed water and wastewater plant operators. It did go down a little bit during the pandemic, but we expect it to bounce back up, so we're asking you not to take that. The other funds on, or the other cuts on utility operating fund, the hundred thousand dollars for utility water and sewer purchases, we can live with that, and the sinking fund, hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for consultants, we can eat that, and a hundred and thirty-five for other costs of issue, we're good with that. It all relates to timing and how things went up, so we agree with those cuts. On the garage replacement fund, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars for automotive equipment. We can live with that. And then finally, the last one on the list, the reforestation fund. So this again, this is for the grant program through the Chesapeake Bay Trust. And what happened is, I guess, last year, they weren't able to meet all the requirements, so we're pulling it over to this year. We need to fund it this year. If we were to cut this, it would only leave sixty thousand dollars for reforestation and planting, and we have big plans to plant more trees, so we'd ask you to keep that funding in. So that's everything on the operating side. If you guys have any immediate questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I will move over to capital. Seeing no flags, I will proceed. All right, so you have a similar sheet in front of you, I believe, for the capital budget. I'm going to make this one simple. I'm only going to talk about the ones that we disagree with. So you'll see the vast majority of them are color-coded green, and those are good cuts. We agree to them, and I'm not going to spend time talking about them. So I'll just go through red and yellow. We're going to start in the utility fund. The first one is waste, or sorry, W R F infrastructure. This is a multi-year project. We'd like to retain the five hundred K. This is contingency for unanticipated repairs, and there's a lot going on here, and so we really don't want to be hamstruck or hamstrong with that reduction. The next one is two hundred fifty thousand for Cox Creek. This project's not yet under contract for construction, so we'd like to keep those funds needed to cover any estimated shortfall. For Maryland City Plant, we also oppose that seventy thousand dollar cut. This was originally bid back in January. Bids came back recently over budget, so we'd like to keep that in. Moving on, here's another one, the fiber network. Again, this is something I don't completely understand, but our friends in O I T feel very strongly that you should not cut this. This is, I think, related to the connectivity options to connect our county facilities to fiber optic connections. So we've asked asked you not to take that one. Moving on now into our H-class projects, pet improvement through State Highway Association. This project was recently revised. We're not as reliant on S H A management, so we need this five hundred thousand dollars in it. We, if we lose this, we're worried that it would jeopardize our ability to do the four projects in here, so please don't take that money. The recommendation for Route Three, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. I think the recommendation was to push this out. We'd like to keep it in twenty-three. We don't dispute the auditor's finding that it will, it could possibly be delayed, but this is a priority project. I think we're doing everything we can to push the state to make it go fast, and we'd like to keep the money in twenty-three. We have pay-go funding in twenty-three, so it's not a lumpiness issue. So we'd like to keep our options open and retain that funding in twenty-three rather than push it to twenty-four. On the Rivera Beach Library, we would ask you to reject that hundred and sixty thousand dollars recommended cut. There could be additional unknown costs due to construction delays for this project, so we would ask you not to take that. Greenways, parkland, and open space, I think the recommendation was to cut five hundred thousand dollars or maybe to put it in advanced land acquisition. But this this object is specifically for preservation and conservation acquisitions, whereas advanced land is for future county facilities, the schools and fire departments and things of that nature. So we do believe this is the right place to put it, and we didn't spend a lot of that money last year because the department is still working on some major acquisitions using this. That money carries over. So we, if we retain that and we put this new funding in, we believe that Wreckin Parks will be able to settle on some good conservation properties in this year, so we'd ask you not to take that. For park renovation, I think I think the council is very familiar with this because you asked the department to do a lot of things, and they funded out of park renovation. It's true, we added an extra million dollars this year because we think that there's a huge backlog. The department reports that their backlog is over nine million dollars, so we would ask you to keep this funding in. A lot of it is actually grant-funded this year. We got some state money, so please don't cut park reno because the department will end up telling you no when you call them next spring and ask them to do something in a park, and nobody likes that. For the Rundle Swim Center renovation, this project is very early on, and we don't want to recognize a cut there. There's just too much going on, and we think we'd probably have to put it back later, so just don't take that cut. For hot socks, park improvements, we need these funds. There's a fifty thousand dollar recommended cut, but we need those for requirements by the State Highway Association for improvements related to that park. For Odenton Park, which I believe also known as Gork Park, there's a recommendation for a hundred thousand dollars, but we need all the funding on that. There's two separate child projects going on that were just bid together, and we're going to end up needing all that funding. Also, Mr. Pruski would never let us cut that anyway. So Brooklyn Park Community Center. So I think the the recommendation here was just to do, I think, a text amendment to change the narrative, to restrict some of the funding. We just ask you not to do that. We're certainly happy to work with the council to get whatever you need. But this this project has some federal money attached to it now. We are pursuing public-private partnership options, but we don't want to get too restrictive on that because it might delay the project, so we would ask you to reject that recommendation. Next one is the disability compliance implementation. I think the council knows we've got a lot of A D A compliance work that needs to be done. We have a recurring budget item that puts three hundred fifty thousand in every year. What we've done this year, because of our availability of pay-go for twenty-three, is we've moved the twenty-four dollars up to twenty-three. We believe that this is a good move. We believe we can do more this year. So we're essentially front-loading it as the auditor recognized, but we'd ask you to keep it that way so we can do more on A D A this year when we have the cash available. Next is Trail Spurs and Connections. Same deal there. We moved the funding up because there's a big need. There's a lot of projects, and we'd like to have the flexibility for the department to move forward on as much as that as possible in twenty-three. So we'd ask you to reject that change. Getting down to home stretch, now we're in the W P R F projects for P T dash P C dash zero one. There's still remaining invoices to be paid, so there's a a recommended cut of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But we'd ask you not to take those. If it turns out that there's any unencumbered amount left in twenty-four, we'll certainly release that. It's just too early to know that for sure. And then finally, on the W P R F land acquisition, there was a recommendation for a hundred thousand dollars. We would ask you guys not to take that. The county is pursuing some opportunities for acquisitions in floodplain areas that would be very good to do. We're just not ready to to go for those yet. So those are all of our opposition, and now there's three projects where we kind of either partially agreed or had an amendment agreement. These are colored yellow on your sheet. They're all in the W P R F project as well. So for M R dash O F dash O four, we would agree to the cut in twenty-four, but not in fiscal year twenty-three for forty thousand dollars. For S E dash O F dash O one, that was a recommendation for a two hundred fifty thousand dollar cut. We think that would cut too deeply, but we're willing to to agree to a hundred and ninety-five K. We can live with that. And finally, in S E dash P C dash zero one, you got, the auditor recommended a seventy thousand dollar cut. We don't want to agree to that, but we think we can live with fifty thousand. So I don't have a total for you on what that all adds up to because there's different funding sources and bonds and pay-go and everything. We will sort that out and provide that to you in the coming days, but I don't have a nifty total like I had for the operating budget. But the completes my remarks, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trumbauer. That was speedy and efficient as always. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Well, seeing none, we'll just say thank you once again, and thank you to the auditor and for, you know, getting us through this day really quickly. Is there any business to be brought before the county council at this time? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second, Lacy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until seven P M. on Monday, June sixth, twenty twenty-two, when we will meet in person in the council chambers for a regular legislative council session, and we will see you then. Have a great rest of your weekend, weekend.